The approval of the minutes from our last meeting. I only saw one mistake. Like Maine.
Like the state. Like Brunswick.
Someone cheated on her spelling.
I, that's so disappointing.
Yeah, number seven.
And what was Chris's grade?
Not the same as mine. I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
So the motion by Kent, a second by Chris to approve the minutes with that one little amendment.
Without the E.
With the E on Maine. Without the E on Maine. All those in favor?
When I got a text from Tim, he's not feeling well, so he's not gonna be here at night.
Next is the department reports.
I guess it's all on me. Sunday, we had to get together all the, all the personnel of PD. We had a pot lockdown at Packard Center. Everybody, everybody who, except for two couldn't make it. And two others that went on the counter for it. But it was a good turnout and we had a good time and just kind of a, a team building bonding sort of moment.
Who was, who was there?
Uh, all the people from the, the police department.
Okay.
Parents, kids, everybody. So, yeah, significant out of that. It was a good time. Good bonding experience. The other issue we, I'm having right now is getting through the, the C just audit and finding deficiencies in, in. That have been brought to our attention through the state and the FBI and just trying to deal with those issues one at a time and. Move forward and try to be, you know, get into compliance. Compliance issues that they require and it's just something we gotta do and. Just hammering through it. But when the official audit comes back, the final audit comes back, I'll. Bring it to your attention what the deficiencies are and we'll go forward from that.
And what you've done or you are doing to mitigate them.
Correct.
So is that something that's done every year or?
No, it's done every, the last one was done in two thousand seventeen. They're supposed to do them every two years.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but the last one that was done was in two thousand seventeen, so it's been a while.
So Kevin went through it?
Yep.
And, and then these things have cropped up since or?
Some have, yes.
I'm sure there were things when Kevin went through it that he had to address. I mean, it's, it's a common thing. It's not like. All police departments don't have anything to address when there's.
Right, right. And it's, you know, it's a catch-up mode. They, they make changes and we have to comply with those changes. That's what we're trying to deal with now, but just to keep you on the forefront of what's going on.
Thank you.
So I, I just had a couple of things. One, I, I talked to Doug about and I said I would bring it up here. Cause I'm gonna go to a MMA is putting on a thing about what certain towns are doing about brown town lots and some of these other pests that are. Coming around. And I just wanted to get a feel from all you folks. Some towns are taking the approach like Waterville. That the town is actively getting involved in the mitigation. They're trying to get it off of town property and any. Public trees, all that kind of stuff. Is that something that you're interested in learning about or do you want to treat it as though it's private issue and individuals just deal with their own? Properties.
My thought is that we deal with public property.
Yeah, and then.
Because if we don't, then it's gonna spread to the adjoining property. You know what I'm saying?
So it is something that I will, I'll do a little work in it and I'll put it in the budget. We're probably gonna be. Too late for this year because I think you have to start doing mitigation like now in an early spring. We obviously don't have the money for it, but I could put it in for your next. Potentially put it in the budget for next spring.
Yeah, some people are, are really suffer serious symptoms. When they're allergic to this stuff.
And any information that you can bring back that we can have at the town office for the, for the private landowners that are having issues and. Resources, you know, because sometimes they look to us for that information because we're easier than if they don't have the ability to. Use the Google.
Yes, use the Google. Is that a Jesse term?
No, that's my term for Jesse.
So my second thing is we jumped the gun on posting the roads in my previous position. The, the. The road commissioner was delegated that authority. So when Dan went around and said he was posting them. I didn't, I didn't take anything of it, but I realized that you guys approve that annually. So I have a little. Form here. If I could just get you to say that you're okay with posting the town roads, that would be much appreciated. So we can cover, cover our, our mistakes. So I don't. Motion to close. I don't know if someone wants to read this little note. You don't have to read the whole thing, but it might give you a way to make a motion up.
It's, we've gotten it for every year.
Every year, it's the same thing. I noticed the date wasn't quite right on the one they gave me, so I gotta fix that.
And should we maybe, uh, how about an ordinance so that it is turned over to the road commissioner? So, I mean, because it, it's just a formality that.
Could we put something on a warrant to create?
I can look at that draft and look.
You know, the road commissioner is authorized to do that based on the weather. Because really it's.
Yeah. So the ones that are highlighted.
I think they're doing all of them, but some of them were posted on. Some were posted last Friday and the rest of them were done yesterday. I think they did the dirt ones last Friday.
Yeah.
And then they went around early this week when they came back from the weekend and they did the rest.
Fine. I make a motion to post the roads as listed on this memo.
Well, there's a motion by Kent, a second by Harold to post the roads as. On the road posting memo. All those in favor?
Very good. Thank you. I got, I got a request from, I think his name is Jonathan Nagy. He says he works at the insurance company. Here downtown. I'm not sure if he's a resident, but he identified himself that he works there. He was wondering, and I didn't know how to answer this question. He was wondering if, if it was okay if him and his kids tapped a few of the trees up on the academy property. For middle school property, the old middle school property. And I didn't know how you.
Up here.
Yeah, yeah, right next door.
Before. Sean might have Sean Schultz.
He said it's not a commercial operation. It's just something to do with his kids. So I, I don't know how you felt about that.
I don't know if that's a good thing to say yes to just because you could have a hundred people putting it to happen in the tree and that's not good for the tree.
Yeah, or, you know, what's the liability involved in that? I don't know.
I just, it's. I personally myself, I'd go to a landlord and say, hey, do you mind if I tap a couple of your trees? You know? It's a. Wouldn't involve Paul if I saw one laying out there, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't just say, yeah, go ahead. That would be my thought on it.
I agree that, you know, how do you, how do you manage that going forward with?
I could probably also, I could probably also kind of defer the thing in saying that we're gonna have construction on the property in the next month or two and.
If he wants to come to my place and walk out behind my house and tap maple trees, welcome to do it. Just tell him that. He come to two, two, five Ridge Road, walk out behind my house, tap all the maple trees you want.
As long as you get a taste of what he's.
Thank you. And my last one was you, you noticed in your packet, there was a, there's a proposal from KB cog to do a joint. Code enforcement position. I have already reached out to the town manager at Fayette because he's attended some of those meetings and they are interested. In participating. He was going to take the same proposal to his board last night. I didn't hear from him today. I'm not sure if they're open on whatever. Wednesday, right? For the Wednesday. The way that Kate, this is a pilot project by cog and what they're looking is they're looking to hire a full-time employee. They would be a cog employee. They would be on the cog benefits package. And then they're looking for two communities to come up with how to split the other eighty percent of the time. So one day we, they'd be working for cog as like a consultant. Type to all the cog communities. And then the other days would be split, however you wanted to do it. Fayette is interested in doing two days a week and that would give us two days a week and we'd split the remaining cost. It's kind of a reasonable. Cost. If you take the eighty percent in that, you'll see it's sixty-four eight. So it's like thirty-two. Four for, for us to do that. It's not significantly more than our current budget, but it would give us quite a bit more availability than we have now.
So we'd have two days?
Two full days a week. And I talked to. He, the chair of the planning board, and I think they would like a little more support in, in the way that they used to have. So my thought was on the, on the, on the weeks in which there. Is a planning board meeting that he would be one full day in the office and then come in maybe at noon and then staff the planning board meeting that night. So we'd still get the two days, but the plan, they'd only meet like once a month generally. So.
What do we currently have?
What, what do we currently have? Basically two hours a week. From four to six and then whatever he responds to for emails or text messages, you know, in between. But he's really only here two hours a, a week.
Well, this would be big.
It would be a significant increase in the availability of having somebody in there.
And how does KB cog feel that they'll get responses to? For applications that position.
So they don't know that.
Across the board problems.
Yes, they were, they were driven into this because all the cog communities are having a hard time. Belgrade couldn't find anybody. They ended up hiring. A full-time person who's not certified and they made him full-time simply so that. They, they made the position full-time so that he would take it. So he's, he's managing their facilities. Half the time and then he's doing the codes two days a week and they couldn't get anybody unless they made it a full-time job. So that's how they went. The code officer in Oakland is actually carrying the credentials for him in Belgrade. So he, he's also doing the same thing, I think, in Norwich Walk and a couple of other towns. The Oakland codes guys like all over the place.
So if, if we decide to do this, we maintain what we have until they have somebody in place to do this?
So they don't, they didn't know how much interest they would get. All the cog communities were asking for them to help. When I went to the informational. Uh, meeting after they, after they posted this, it was, it was me and Mark from, from Fayette on the call. So I don't, I don't know if there were others, but we were the only two there. So I use that as my, and I called Mark over in Fayette and said, cause we're within the thirty minutes. And I said, do you want to do, I'd like to, I could easily use two days a week. And he said, well, that's what I'm looking for. So it, it just kind of worked out.
Is this a one-year agreement or?
They're gonna hire him as a full-time employee. We are responsible for coming up with whatever agreement we want. And then we are to make a proposal. To cog and they're gonna select the one that they think is the most workable or, or whatever that criteria is. So we may not be the only one. We may go through this and not get picked, but we'll know rather quickly because they have a pretty quick timeline on this thing.
Yeah, I honestly, honestly. You know, there's been a real gap since they retired. I mean. I don't know how to say it other than a huge gap. So, um, you know, I'd like to. If this is a stopgap and we're gonna put together a proposal where we're not tied into it for more than a year or something, while we consider what we want to do longer term going forward. I consider that myself. I would consider that. I'm not sure. I would want to enter into anything long-term that we don't know how it's gonna work, how it would work out for us.
Our, our former guy is here.
Well, we've had so much trouble with KB cog in the past. Why are you gonna put your eggs in a basket with KB cog? Again, it doesn't work. A codes officer has to be. Two, one community or two communities. You, you can't have one guy doing five or six communities. It just doesn't work. The codes are so different. They're. All, all the local codes, how do you do that? You couldn't, you couldn't possibly split your way to do it. I think you should probably ask around locally and see if you can get some help for. From that and do it that way. And I think maybe you'll, you'll get a better response.
I know we've been that road and there isn't a lot of interest up there for part-time things. I mean.
We're competing against the construction industry that's moving, right?
Exactly. And, you know, so, yeah, I mean, we might have an issue with cog, but in. But he would end up having to know what he needs to know if it's part of the, the. Job description, you know, he's gonna have to.
They're gonna do violations?
See, that's, that's again, those are all, um, you know, Dave's point is part of what I was talking about with great. Big gap is that if you don't know the local ordinances, the, the, the shoreline zoning, the shoreline ordinances that you've. Adopted. Your comprehensive plan and all your other town ordinances, which vary from town to town, you don't have a good grasp on them and. It's just can lead to problems. So I'm not opposed to investigating.
You know, I, the only way I can liken it is if I, as a dental hygienist, decided I was gonna go work in another state, I would need to know those laws. So. Obviously, you know, the work is generally the same, but there's certain laws. That allow you to do some procedures and not others. So, you know, if you're gonna take a position, you need to know the laws of. The town that you're working in. So.
But now work in five states.
But exactly, but, but.
It's gonna be two towns.
Be two towns and, you know, so essentially I'd need to know that, you know, so. Obviously, if they're gonna take the position, they're gonna need to, to familiarize themselves with. The, uh, because you're on the two towns. You're not gonna cherry pick somebody off the street that's gonna know that information. I think you're in a position to. To try to, to try to fill a position and at least improve what we've, what we've been working with. So, you know, or.
It's, it's a Band-Aid on a pretty big cut as far as I'm concerned is what it would be. So, but like again, I, I mean, if we cut two hours right now and we have a chance on a, what I would consider to be a short-term basis to. Fill that gap in. So if you could write something that would had to last for a year and, and while that year was going on, we were able to. Come up with a plan to, you know, have somebody that's gonna, you know, I, I don't care if they're only gonna work, whatever. How many, many hours we think we have to have, which I honestly think it's a, it's a full-time job, just like it was. I mean, if you're gonna do everything, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do inspections, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna do violations, if you're gonna keep an eye on. What's going on in town. If, if all you want is just somebody answers phone or write permits, a couple of days a week, no problem. If that's all we're looking for. If we're looking for a more comprehensive approach, then that's not gonna be, that's not gonna fill that bill.
Justin, you said this would be a potential partnership with Fayette?
Yes.
And is Fayette, uh, Mubeck?
No.
Community? No.
They're only fifteen hundred. They're smaller than us.
Okay. So it'd be two separate sets of rules.
Yes.
But, I mean, having just completed my own project and used a third-party inspector, I mean, I, I. It was not an issue. I mean, I didn't have a problem going that route. So. And everything worked smooth as silk, you know, so.
Justin.
Somebody's waiting.
Are we suggesting then if we were to sign up for this, that we would abandon the third-party inspector?
Not necessarily. I mean, it would really depend on, on what, because we would have to get into this agreement and then we, we'd have to. Us with cog would interview people to potentially find somebody. So I don't know what we would get. The hope is, is that if you can. Make it full-time, that you might be able to attract somebody that might not otherwise want to do it because they're gonna have benefits and. Those kinds of things. So that's kind of the. This is a, this is an attempt to fix a problem. The long-term solution is cog is already petitioning the county to, to sort of take this up almost like the. Almost like Cumberland County did with assessing. So that the, so that you'd kind of have a, a, a band of county CEOs that would go around and do all this. This kind of work because there just aren't the people to do it.
Exactly.
Right. Well, I, I, I would, I think it makes sense. I mean, I, I think I'm with Harold on this one in that it's. It's not a perfect solution, but it certainly gets us somewhere. And we can come up with, i- if it doesn't work. Um, we can come up with an alternative in the meantime. But, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, uh, two hours a week. Plus answering phones and such. Leaves a lot to be desired. And if we're gonna, I mean, if the potential is we're gonna keep the third-party inspector piece of it. Which is really the boots on the ground. I mean, that's probably the most helpful thing that the property owners is to have someone there to talk to, to bounce ideas off of. And to say, how do we solve this problem? You know, uh, those are, that's a pretty valuable piece of the system. About, I mean, no one wants to over-regulate anything, but it seems to me like having a person. There to talk with people, to give them good advice about being compliant. That's, that's ninety percent of battle. You need a motion on that?
No, no, I, I'll, I'll put a proposal because it's gonna have to, it'll have to be a, a, a contract at some point. So I'll bring that back to you if we happen to be the one that's chosen. I just need, I just kind of wanted to feel about whether it's worth me pursuing the, you know, the application or the, or the. It's an RFP really, it's sort of. It ends on their behalf.
I mean, the reality is if we said, oh no, we want a full-time position and we want it today, right? You would be waiting. Six months to try and find somebody because we all know. You know, how scarce, uh, construction labor is right now. Essentially, you're asking for. Uh, someone in the construction industry to take a pass on, you know. Incredible wages, which is a good problem to have. Don't, don't get me wrong, right? I mean, really, it's been a long time since, uh, construction people have been paid this well.
So we're in a pool of towns. We're in a pool with a whole bunch of other towns who want code enforcement and they're gonna pick. KB cog is gonna pick some towns.
They're gonna pick a winning proposal. So they have, the way the RFP is written is they're asking two towns to come up with their own. Strategy, whether it be, you know, four hours at one and the rest of the week is at someone else. They're just saying they're gonna take twenty. So they want a day a week with this person. And then they're looking for the towns to come up with any agreement that they think will work for them and put it on paper. And then they're gonna evaluate those based on the ones they think. It's the most likely to succeed. And then they will pick those two communities to partner with basically.
And this, I'm sorry, go ahead. So. There could be some other towns could be.
It could be. I don't know. I, I just know that me and Mark were the only two that were, that were in sort of the pre-bid meeting. For this thing. So there could be others that are already comfortable with it and didn't have any more questions. Or, or we may be the only two. I, I, I don't, I don't know. And I won't know until we.
And even if you submit a, a proposal, it may not be accepted and.
That's right.
It could go.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but it seems to me like if you're the only two towns to show up for the, uh, the pre-RFP meeting, then.
That was kind of my suspicion, but I don't know, you know, but I really don't.
Leg up on the competition.
Yeah, because there were a, there were probably six or eight towns that were on the subcommittee that was creating the job description. Also, there were. Other communities that thought that this was a solution to a problem. I know that like the Belgrade town manager solved his own problem, but they were a long time without. Having anybody until they just decided they were gonna pull the trigger and make it full-time. And he's, I think he's two days a week codes and the rest of the time, he's now their. Facilities manager for the town buildings. And in addition to, so they could make it full-time.
You know, what the question, do you know what the twenty percent amount is? What, what's the dollar amount of twenty percent?
Well, they're estimating a sal, they're, they're estimating a salary because they're not sure, right? Depends who kind of applies. But they were, they had a range, I think from like fifty to sixty-five thousand plus benefits. So if you add the benefits, then they're estimating about eighty-one thousand for the. Total cost. So sixty-four thousand eight hundred is to be split and however you.
Do just shoreline.
For however you figure it out.
Pay me the twenty percent and I'll do shoreline for you.
Well, we're not paying the twenty percent. Cog's paying the twenty percent out of their, their own budget.
Yeah. Of course. What's it costing the town?
There's, the towns would split the sixty-four thousand eight hundred however they divide up the labor.
Yeah, that's what you were paying me.
So, well, if we're, if we're splitting sixty-four.
It'll be thirty-two.
That's what you were paying me for full-time.
But you weren't full-time.
I saw what, yes.
You were.
Thirty-two hours.
Thirty-two hours.
Oh. Oh, you, you fought for full-time.
That's right.
Oh, you worked your way up. Okay.
I started at fifteen.
That's all I had.
At some point, Justin, um, are we gonna talk about, uh, potential? Uh, warrant questions that might require some legal?
Yes, I was working on a memo today. I wasn't sure when you kind of wanted to handle those. I, I think the, the way that Linda. Had done it, she was kind of bringing them to you sort of over the course of the year as you brought the items up.
Yeah.
For me, I think it's, it's, it really should be built in as part of the budget discussion because if you add all these potential capital expenditures and then you're trying to set your budget. You don't know what people are gonna pass in the end. So I kind of wanted you to see them as a package. I did put a memo together today on all the ones that I know about, whether they cost money or just. Other ordinances that, that have been kicked around.
Yeah.
So I was thinking in the next couple of meetings, maybe the first one in March or the second one in March, whatever you are, are comfortable with, when you want me to add it into your. Into your budget discussion. I know the, the March twenty. I'm guessing the second meeting in March is the one that kind of has all the admin stuff. That's gonna be kind of the heavy one, the benefits and all that stuff. So I don't know if you wanted then or if you wanted to discuss that at the next, the early March meeting. It is on my horizon. I just was trying to manage your agendas. That's all.
I, I, I'm happy to follow the lead of the board. I, I, as long as you've got enough time to, if there's some legal review that needs to be done.
Yep.
You know, to, to, to get that, because there's a few of them.
Right, yep, there are, yeah.
The, the, the one, the, uh, one that, the, the article involves the, ours, being able to spend. Money we get from brands and.
Yep.
That, that, will that be renewed or?
Yes. So there's a whole host of, of what I would call housekeeping articles that are always gonna be in there, which would be your authority to use a grant. MMA suggests a specific. A specific article for ARPA. Some towns are doing that, some are not. I think you had one last year. Maybe it was just specific to that. Some are lumping that under the general grant article where you can spend money that comes in as grants or donations for whatever the intended purposes. That's, that's already an article. On your normal warrant.
We didn't have an art, an ARPA. So it was something came later, right?
I'm pretty sure it was a separate, it was a separate article of last year's.
It was.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was a separate article.
I can review, but either way. Personally, I think the regular grant article is fine, but for some reason, I think they were more concerned about the, the communities that are getting. That might have projects that are over a million dollars because they have to do actual reporting back to the feds. And I think they were just trying to make sure that they were gonna be in compliance. We don't have to do any reporting because we don't get enough money. So. No one's gonna be looking, so. All good?
All good.
Okay.
Like border boards.
I've got a couple.
Yes.
I went to Fire and Ice on Sunday afternoon and the fire department did an amazing job. Lots and lots of people. Lots and lots of kids, probably like a hundred and fifty people, full parking lot for the middle of February. That's something. So I would, uh, uh, wanna give a big thank you to the fire department for putting that on and. Uh, recommend that we, uh, uh, continue that tradition. Um, also, we, uh, in the past week, we had, uh, the first meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Um, just kind of a, uh, mostly just an organizing. Uh, uh, meeting. And, uh, one of the recommendations that came out of that committee was. Uh, for the, uh, select board, a recommendation to the select board. Uh, to ask for a public hearing on what it is that DOT is planning for Main Street. So they've. Uh, they've expressed, they sent us that letter a couple of weeks back that said, hey, this is what we're doing. We're doing some sort of drainage. infrastructure project for a stretch of Main Street. It goes from, I think they said like Academy Road up to almost Walsh Avenue or somewhere in that neighborhood. And, and there's a little fine print in that letter that said, hey, if you want a public hearing, then let us know. And when we had that conversation as part of the Economic Development Committee, it was, it was thought that i- if it's available, be a virtual, you know, a Zoom meeting from DOT where they show us what their plans are, kind of, you know, open it up to public discussion about the sequence of what they've got in mind in terms of, you know, their project plan. We thought that that made a whole lot of sense for the town to request that virtual public meeting.
Yeah, and you said something about their plans for the next few, couple of years that we got. I think you sent us a printout. And one of the things that Ken had questioned about was the Wagon Road.
Yes, and I, I forgot to mention that. I, I had a, I had a Zoom meeting with DOT today. And basically, they said that both of those bridges, the one there and the one on Copacanty Road, which is really just to glorify Culver. Both of those, they do not have their allocations yet and they won't until May, which basically means they haven't done anything. So they have no preliminary design, they don't have anything. They expect by November, they will have the preliminary public hearing. So that, and, and they will, they will hold those and they look for input. Apparently now they don't really hold meetings for these types of projects. They have like a web portal where people can make comments or submissions in through it and then they review those. They make amendments to their plan if they need to and they expect that it would be twelve months from then that you would get your final design or proposal for that. And then it would bid out sometime in early twenty twenty-four for a potential twenty twenty-four build or twenty twenty-five. So it's not, it's not coming up quickly.
Happening this year.
I expressed that there would be some desire to have that be two lanes. They understood that. And then they, they were very skeptical of, of, of lifting that bridge with their, with their scope, with the money that they have. And, and they also asked, and I'm hoping one of you can tell me what the, that boat launch thing that's kind of down there, who owns that or who built it? Because they're very concerned about if there's federal money used for it, they can't move it. If it's the town owned, they're gonna need, you know, a deed or something to say that we're okay with them taking that property or whatever it is. So they did need, I have a whole list of questions that I'll circulate to you that maybe you can answer from a historical perspective, but they did wanna know what that was.
Yeah, I know way more about that than I really need to.
I suspected you might.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a history that goes back to the seventies on that one. Actually, back to nineteen forty-seven, when they raised the dam by six inches or a foot or something. Yeah.
Okay, I can circulate that. They, they gave a list of questions for me to.
Is it wise to have, have anything to do with making that road, making that bridge or, and the passage under it, anything other than just, well, it's, it was kind of destructive of the lake by, because of the mill foil. And if, uh, so should it, we, should it be ever be allowed to be used again as a passageway?
Well, I'll, uh, the jury is still out. Actually, I've got a meeting to go to. I think maybe in a week or two from the Lake Association where we are discussing exactly what the priority is in terms of that particular stream delta that's, you know, out and around that bridge. The good news is that by the end of the season of last year, all the survey work that they'd done found zero signs of, of mill foil in that area. It's not a great place to, I mean, I, it's okay to launch a canoe, not a great place for, you know, motorized traffic. And in fact, since the motorized traffic has come out of that delta area, the whole thing is sealed up with vegetation. Yeah, I mean, it's like weed city. So, uh, not, not mill foil, native weed city, right? Right? So, uh, so, uh, in fact, I should take, I should offer this, it's because it's related. The, the folks at IF&amp;W have received all of their permitting for the new boat launch that will be happening at the north end of Lake and Winter. And they're hoping to put construction out to bid in the next month or two. So that will, that, that is looking like it's probably gonna happen construction-wise this year. We don't know if mill foil is gonna come back or not. We know that, you know, the ten-acre problem that was right at the entrance of that area has been shrunk substantially. So, so I don't know, let me, let me get back to you.
Are there signs from the Holmes Road that would indicate where that's gonna be?
Uh, well, if you go to Camp Machuana, the, the Camp Machuana admin building, right?
IF&amp;W will post a, a public boat launch sign out on May Cumber Road, out on Holmes Road.
Yep.
It's Holmes Road.
Yep.
They, yeah, they'll, every, every boat launch gets a, a public boat launch size, a blue sign with boat on it and a Bennett marks. Even if you have to go down a dirt road however long, and then to actually take a turn off that to go into the boat launch, wherever the, the first paved road, wherever that intersects with a paved road, that's where the sign goes.
Like we have here on Beach Road and one thirty-five, yeah.
Right, right. So, yeah, so it'll be well marked. And, and as far as the, the launch on the wagon, if it's, I mean, to, to Ken's point, it never was good. It was, you could use it, but it wasn't good. But the other thing was it was always a traffic hazard.
It was dangerous.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's disaster waiting to happen. We already had a septic truck go into the drink layer one time.
I mean, we're gonna have a nice launch, but if done, we'll have a nice launch up at Machuana.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, for those that wanna, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be lots of folks who wanna keep up the tradition of putting in a canoe down there.
Canoe or kayak or a John boat or anything that's non-power, you can carry on it, a carry-on ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hand carry. In fact, it might even be interesting, I mean, this is just, I'm thinking out loud here and I probably ought to shut up before I talk to my folks down at the Lake Association to make sure that they're cool with this. But, I mean, we could, we did this at the Jug Stream. We put up a sign that says hand carry only. And it says that people are welcome to put in there and, you know, occasionally someone gets crazy, but that's fine. Folks know that it's for putting in a canoe or, you know, a kayak, it's fun.
So from, to answer your initial question, from my perspective, if we had to, if we had to grant an easement or right-of-way to the state in order to make that a two-lane bridge, I would be absolutely in favor of doing that.
They were mostly concerned that federal funds were used to put that in there because they said that would be a total, oh, no, that'll stop the process. Yeah, yeah.
Long before DEP had anything to do with this, somebody dumped some concrete down there.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that thing has been a band-aid since the beginning. And in fact, there's, it, it exists in the right-of-way from the road.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's just an old-fashioned boat launch. Like the one on Wilson Pond. Okay. You have more?
No, no, I'm done.
Okay. So then onto public comments.
Anybody? Nope, I don't know. Say anything. I don't see any hands. No.
Okay. Oh, and the next thing on the agenda is to consider and authorize a town map, the town manager treasurer to sell by quitclaim deed a foreclosed property located at five, five, eight South Mama Road for back taxes, interests and costs.
So I can explain that this isn't, this isn't like an auction sale. What it is, is the, the, the current owners, if you will, they really don't own it. It's been foreclosed on by the town. They are selling it to somebody else of their own volition. So the title company has called and in order for that sale to go through, this would have to be cleaned up. So at the time of sale, I would attend the closing. The title company would hand me the twenty thousand and I would hand them a quitclaim deed so then their transaction could occur. So that's what that says. So this, this is good for us, it's gonna clear up a, an account that's almost twenty-one thousand in arrears.
Exactly.
But I can't do it unless you tell me.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager treasurer to sell by quitclaim deed and foreclosed property on five, five, eight South Mama Road for back tax, taxes, interest and costs.
Second. So there's a motion by Chris and a second by Ken to do all that. Okay, let me, uh, hope you hear that. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to consider and declare that several real estate properties of property tax accounts are uncollectible and abate the delinquent taxes pursuant to three, six MRSA eight, four, one, three.
So as I, as I outlined in the memo here, this is, this is the first step in us clearing up our, our, our foreclosed or collectible accounts that are in arrears. So as a first step, I'm trying to clear up the ones that I clearly know we can't collect and it either don't exist or we don't have the records to support the debt. So as you could see, the first three are mobile homes, which were a little, which were illegally removed from property without paying the back taxes, so that the mobile homes don't exist. And the person who owned the mobile home doesn't own the land. So that's clearly uncollectible. There's, there's an account in here that appears to be a trio conversion error. There were a handful of accounts when they switched from the Northern Data System into Trio that we duplicated accounts. So these people may have paid the taxes on one of the accounts, but they were in there twice. So that's, that's what some of those are. The large one there, the one that's eighteen forty-nine, this is one that a sale went through. It must have been a private sale. These are all land-only accounts, by the way, other than the mobiles. It, it must have been a private sale that went through without our knowledge. The new owners have paid faithfully since they have bought the property and they are not in arrears. This is the previous owner on that property. Normally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say that, that you would forgive that, but the problem is I don't, I don't have enough, I don't have faith in the backup information on the liens or, or on the process that we have all the green cards from the mail and all that. I don't have enough paperwork to support it. So it would be, it would be very difficult to collect on it. So I recommend, since the new people are paying, that we just abate those taxes as uncollectible too.
So this is basically housekeeping.
Yes.
And of course, the, the, the large one there, the eighteen hundred one, if we don't have the documentation and someone were to challenge court, then they would win and we would agree out our legal fees.
That's correct.
For trying to, you know, trying to collect.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's nonsensical.
And it's probably over a decade old.
Yeah, I'm moved that we declare the several real estate property tax accounts listed on the town manager's memo that are uncollectible and abate the delinquent taxes pursuant to thirty-six MRSA eight, forty-one, three.
I'll second.
So there's a motion by Harold, uh, second by Chris to do all that. Harold, just explain. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is budget review for a bunch of things.
I, is there any chance I can go first so I can get to my author talk program at seven? Oh, you're great, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome. I may sneak in a department head report too, if that'd be all right. But, um, okay, so, um, I just wanna thank you guys, uh, uh, guys and girl upfront for considering the increase in the COLA. I know it's, might not go through, but I talked to Lori about it and she very kindly recalibrated the library budget for me. She, she did my math, I didn't have to, which was brilliant. I kept most lines flat, really the only increase was in the part-time line because I have somebody leaving us and hoping to get somebody for a few extra hours than we were doing. And I just wondered if anybody had any questions. It.
I know, and it was essentially a flat budget other than the.
Pretty flat, with a two-point-five COLA, it was up about two-point-two percent. Now it's up about four-point-two percent. Not, not too bad. We, we really do try to keep it, keep it low if we can. And of course, we have, you know, the wonderful generous friends group that helps us out on top, so it's great. Well, if nobody has any questions, I'll move on. All right. Well, I am, again, I'm sorry, I'm zooming tonight, not there, present, you know, in person, but we do have a local author tonight on Zoom and I just actually just signed three more people up for it while we were talking. So, um, I just wanted to say that in addition to providing, you know, free Wi-Fi, printing, copying books, movies and magazines, we're finally getting back into programming in a big way. We do have a monthly live event with the Love on a Leash Therapy Dogs and, and kids and adults come in for that and a monthly book sale. But I think probably until warmer weather comes, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to do mostly virtual programming. But we're having a lot of fun with it. You know, we did, for adults, we did a blind date with a book. That was a huge hit. It is like biggest thing we've done in a while. And all it was, was a, a book, a paperback book. They didn't have to bring it back. We got it from the book sale, tucked it inside with a little chocolate. Nobody could see what they're getting, just a blurb to, to tease them. And oh my gosh, those things flew out of here, it was great. And we gave away, this past weekend book sale, we gave away pre-kids books to help support the upcoming PTO Read-A-Thon. Um, and we've been providing take-and-make craft kits for kids. We did some for Valentine's Day, we did some just for the fun of it, got a couple for this vacation week too. We also have several author visits planned for the months to come, working with their friends on that. We also have the story walk at Woodyer Woods that we change each season. And I've mentioned a couple of times in passing to some of you about maybe expanding to the beach or maybe the property down on Maple Street, just looking for other venues for that. I've also been working more closely with the schools and via Facebook to get more information about the library out to parents. And I, I noted that we're talking about Brown Tail Moth, which excites me because they're a menace. I have been trying to set up a, a virtual program with the state for BTM, but I, I haven't had much luck, they're, they're totally booked. But I think what I'm gonna do for now is just link to the state's many resources. They've got a webpage devoted to it. And I might even launch our Library of Things initiative by offering a pole pruner for people to borrow. Did you see the issue with that?
No, I saw one town was doing that. So I saw that one town's doing that, other libraries are doing that. And of course, from my time sitting on the library board, those are the things that we talked about, people being able to borrow tools and, you know, different things like that. So I think that that's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 I support the town, you know, just personally, I would support the town doing something. You know, pruning in the, in the winter is great. This PT Kerstaki is another thing you can do. You dilute it and spray the leaves and the caterpillars eat the leaves and their stomachs implode. Pretty, pretty horrible way to go.
Julie, are you gloating?
It's pretty satisfying. But I just, you know, kudos for trying to do something. And we've done a program in the past on, on Brown Trail off when they were first coming into the area and it, it was, it was well-attended. So I'm, I'm still gonna work on the state to do a virtual Q and A, but it, you know, something's better than nothing, so. It was well attended, so I'm, I'm still gonna work on the state to do a virtual Q and A, but it, it, you know, something's better than nothing, so.
Does the um, the uh um, Highmore, do they have people that would be willing to talk or? Work about that or, you know?
Good question. Let me.
We've got them right handy and uh, you know, so whether or not pruning poles. I I don't know if you were gonna go through the friends to procure those or if we had resources to reach out to, you know. Uh, Pierce Farmers Union or whatever for donations or the or the uh cooperative extension for that. However, you, I don't know how you were gonna work it.
Well, I already, I already did purchase one, uh was kind of waiting to get okay for it and and uh. We, we could just see how it goes. The friends are, I think, probably would be very supportive of that. It's for the community, so. I think pretty much that that'd be how we do it. They, they've got, they've got some money to do it and I'd hate to ask for donations if.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's just a scourge. That stuff's the worst.
It's. Anything other than me stepping on them when I'm walking on Main Street, so.
I appreciate your time.
Okay, so on to uh Compton Hall.
Dennis couldn't be here tonight. He had a, he had a conflict. Uh, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that didn't. There wasn't uh any real significant change other than. He wanted to add some money in here um for general supplies. So what he, what he's kind of been doing now is he's been kind of cobbling together. Stuff, sometimes he's buying it with his own money or he's bringing it, you know, from home and stuff like, you know, if he needs, you know. Anything you could think of. He needs a hammer or some paintbrushes or something like that. He didn't really have a a a line for those types of odd. Odds and ends that he had. And so he was, he was looking at that. You could see that's three thirteen.
Some of that stuff would should have been uh left behind. Buddy, four, he went.
I, he talked about this at our last um Compton Hall.
Yeah.
Trustee meeting.
Right.
A lot of the stuff, tools and power tools he gave to moved him to uh. Public Works because it was stuff that he never was going to, you know, dive into. But I think this was kind of like. Everyday run of the mill stuff that wasn't covered. You know, like through general maintenance or cleaning supplies or things like that, just the, the odds and ends to have a line that you could draw from. For those one-offs, so.
Uh, the building maintenance uh account of forty sixty, that has a line for uh. Uh general supplies too, but those are not the same as what Dennis would be wanting.
Right, because Compton Hall has its own budget, so we try to encompass all of, all of their costs would generally be included, other than the. Other than the cleaning, cause we've kind of centralized that in the, in the building maintenance, but all of, all the costs are for Compton are. Are in that budget, so we know what it costs to run that building. And then the other, the other increase obviously is the heating fuel. That's just kind of a stab in the dark, but I mean, we all know that's gone up. Quite a bit and 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 you'll notice uh, I think that's about the only other major.
Electricity, but you did it right. You put it up thirty percent, which is what it's expected.
Supposed to be, right, yeah. Uh, I was trying to think if there was anything else here.
I'll sit with a candle for you.
There, there will be, is a capital, it'll be stuff for.
Yes. Yep. So this next one here is one that I'm proposing. It's changed. The town office was its own budget. Now that we have this building up here too, it's um, it's advantageous to just kind of have a generalized building maintenance budget. It's better for a couple of reasons. One is we just don't, we don't really need all the detail on the building like the town hall and um. If we sort of centralize it in one particular building has an issue, we have kind of a bigger pot that we can draw from to try to fix unexpected issues. So I was proposing that we just move the town hall budget right into the building maintenance budget and just kind of consolidate it all into one department. Um, I don't think there's any, the, the increase in the cleaning service on there is because we added this building to it. And I think that's it, other than the lines that, uh other than the fuel and electricity and the new lines that we added in here from the town hall.
But it's still, it's basically flat from. Expense, what you actually expended.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's no real initiative in here. Now, the debt retirement is what we have right now. So when we get into the, when we get into the C I P. This, if you were gonna borrow for anything else, this, this would increase. This is where we are next year with the Academy. On being, being added in the other new debt. This is, this is the, this is the entirety of it um as of right now. For next year. The debt retirement is the, is the uh, is the principal and the next one, the ten forty is the interest. Just add is the, obviously is the academy renovation. And the Maple, Maine and Beach sidewalk, that will come out of the, the uh, the T F.
We um, do we have a, a sense of the timeframe for Maple and Main Street at this point?
No, I, I, I don't. It was, it was, it was predicted to be a twenty twenty-three project, the last that I, I knew, but um. I don't know any more than that at this point.
And if we're not expending those funds, do we, we don't, do we still have to pay principal and interest on?
We do, if we borrowed it and and we've taken the money and I think the requirement was for the work that had um. Had already been started or had been planned to be started. We've already gotten the money for it, so we'd be, we'd be paying it back.
Alright, so it's sitting in a, a reserve account somewhere for the remaining pieces of those projects that. And we are obligated to pay it back.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
The elected officials budget isn't, there's not much stock. Okay, the M M A do um. And I have to estimate those because they go on a, on a calendar year budget where our fiscal year, so it's not quite that fifty-two fifty. But if it increases next January, we need a little bit, uh, cause I noticed that. If you look, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget was budgeted on the, on the calendar year twenty-one and that's why the. That's why it's over expended. So I just, I added a little bit on for like a three percent, just assuming it would go up a little bit. Or what is the town office?
We get a call.
If you would like to.
Everybody else get a call.
No, alright. Alright. Then uh, we're on to warrant number sixteen. I put that down there. I don't know if you've seen it. It's, I think it's sitting by Tim's seat.
Oh, yes.
In a best of cook lake improvement, open spec, open inspections and basic plant program. Bernstein Shore, that's our monthly retainer, what, one thousand forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Blue Rock Earthworks Inc., solid waste hauling, two thousand three hundred forty-five, Central Main Power. Uh, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Um, I think this, I says Kides Corporation, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. It's a Sander chain and blade grader. Uh, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Dennis K. Burke, diesel fuel, four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. Fieldings oil and propane, heating fuel, one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Wheat truck and refrigeration, this was a, a failure of one of our main um plow trucks, oil pump uh. Went, it was a good thing they discovered it or we would have lost the whole engine. Seven thousand dollars and sixty cents. Main commercial tire, loader tire, tires that mount for F five fifty, one thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. Name equalization, this is our assessor, four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Main Heritage Weavers, these are the throw blankets for the academy, one thousand fifty dollars. Main waste to energy, this is a recycling, two thousand thirty-six dollars and six cents. New England Salt Company LLC, seven thousand three hundred eighty-three for salt. Simmered in suns, I was hoping Dan would be here. I don't know what this is, so I apologize. It's card lock vending, one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty cents. Um, top notch bows, recreational cheerleading bows, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Treasurer state of Maine for motor vehicles, two checks, five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and three cents and three thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Will we approve the warrant?
I'll second.
So a motion by Harold, second by Chris to approve our number sixteen. Who was in favor?
Second.
Uh, Justin, do we know if uh that part came in for the, that truck?